We get into this discussion here. Kind of suggest they suspend with some of the formalities and you get open wide up so we can talk. But everybody keep getting what you can publicly know.
I like that idea. Okay, we'll wait for her.
Nick, what was the name of that software developer?
He can't spell it, I can tell you that. Okay, so I see Jenny. Well, I've got one or two. Let's reconvene. Do you take a roll, please, Nick?
President Cavello.
President.
Commissioner Torgerson.
President.
Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Schiffer.
Here.
Vice President Red Haller. Commissioner Curra. Commissioner Francisco.
Here.
Commissioner Wildcat.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum. Our liaisons are fashionably late.
Okay, very good. They'll be with us shortly, let's get rolling. We have item thirteen, discussion, consideration, possible action on the following matters. Meeting dates coming up, May sixteenth, June eighteenth, September nineteenth. Those are all in person and offered via Zoom. And then the twentieth and twenty-first, our annual fall meeting, which generally consists of a half day on Thursday and a full day on Friday. Does anybody have any comments, questions, consideration with regards to any of that?
President Cavello, the only thing that I would say is May sixteenth is opening day for live racing in Gillette. I don't think that the staff has any concerns with that overlapping. I guess that would be up to you all. If you feel like we should move that date or not. I don't see any, any issues with it.
Well, if anyone has any problems, we'll continue forward then. General discussion and public comment. This is where we open it wide open. All in good taste, please. Okay, that's enough for thirteen.
President Cavello. Commissioner Schiffer has his hand up.
Commissioner Schiffer, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, Commissioner, President Cavello, it's just that the volume on my feed is very low. I can't hear hardly anything you all are saying.
Okay, we'll try to enunciate.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Anyone have anything else? Another hand up, who's that? Well, that's us, okay. All right, moving right along. We're not going to break for lunch, so we're going to go right into the Spectrum Gaming Study Review and Discussion. I think for this part of the meeting, I would kind of like to suspend our normal decorum here. And as we work through this, if something comes up, let's have more of a roundtable. You don't need to address me as the chair to jump in on something. If something's of importance, please come to a microphone or whatever, and let's, let's have a good discussion on this. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I shared my screen here. I, I've put together a, just a short PowerPoint to kind of go over some highlights. I will give my, this is my disclaimer, that I just put this together to try to help streamline, streamline this discussion around this. So these slides have excerpts from the complete report, not, not, that's not in its entirety. So it is available on our website under the Resources tab. If you click, go to our website, click Resources, it is the 2024 Gaming Study. It's at the very bottom, it's a real big button. With that being said, the, the Gaming Commission and Joint Appropriations retained Spectrum Gaming Group to conduct a feasibility study of the regulatory system and authorized gaming operations in the state following the recent expansion of gaming attractions. During the evaluation, Spectrum reviewed the applicable gaming statutes, regulations governing authorized gaming operations in Wyoming. This included the following: paramutual racing, historic course racing, skill-based amusement games, online sports wagering, and charitable gaming. The following items were outlined in the report as topics of consideration for the commission. The first one was Spectrum Gaming Group recommended that the commission evaluate the use of the multi-jurisdictional personal history disclosure form and the multi-jurisdictional business entity disclosure form. Both of these forms were put together by the International Association of Gaming Regulators, and they're used in the vast majority of gaming jurisdictions across the board nationally. In the report, they noted that they thought that the application process could be improved upon by using this form. This, this was a very easy adoption for us. This is one of the processes that we put in place internally for applications. So this form is now required for our key personnel applications for online sports wagering. So your board of directors, members there, and also the key personnel for HHR operations. So that would be your permit holders, your owners of those companies. The vast majority of these folks probably already have this form completed, and they just keep it updated, which is good, because it is a sixty-seven page document that goes through a very in-depth history to, to ensure that they are of good moral character and, and financial stability to hold a gaming license. So this, this recommendation has been adopted, these forms are available on our website as well. We've adjusted them a little bit to where they are fillable PDFs, so you don't have to fill it out and handwrite it. You can actually get on there and type things through, and it should make it as painless as like sixty-seven pages could be. One of the other recommendations, and this is on page, what is that, four? Of the, of the study, they recommended that the commission establish and fill a position of general counsel for the commission. This says notably, as gaming operations continue to evolve and expand in their scope and volume, it is imperative that the commission have the flexibility and latitude to increase staffing levels to accommodate necessary duties and responsibilities. And at this juncture, they believe that it would be advisable to add in-house legal counsel to our staff. So in the I, I think you can. So you'll see at the bottom of this, I just put, I put the recommendations, I've, we've had this discussion. So I, at the bottom of these in bold, I just put for us what this would require us to do. For this, for this kind of request, if, if you also choose, this would really just require us, require us to budget this position into our budget and then present that to Joint Appropriations, just like we would any other new position. So yeah, that's, that's kind of where I leave that, and then I guess your direction, how, how you want to handle that. We will start doing budgetary work for the next biennium, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, within the next month or two. So we will start putting together our, our budget request for the next biennium in the very near future.
Would that attorney be still passable to the Attorney General's Office or completely separate?
This, this would be a completely separate, this would just be in-house legal counsel. And we would have to work, Mr. Kaler and I have talked about that, and, and we'd have to work with the Attorney General's Office as well to see how that, you know, normally state agencies get their legal counsel from the Attorney General's Office, and they've assigned somebody. So there is a couple of nuances in there that, that we'll have to work through, but we can definitely start.
A full-time.
This would be a full-time attorney. And that's, that's an option too, that
What would be more advantageous of that versus just having somebody in Mike's position that was assigned to us full-time? Because we're, I know this is, we're not the only thing that Mike has on his plate.
Not even. No, and
I don't know how fair that is.
We could work with, and you're going to have to kick me if I'm wrong and something, but I think we could work with the Attorney General's Office and figure out how that funding would look coming from our office to fund a full-time position that is assigned, that works under the umbrella of the AG's office, but is solely assigned to us.
Without putting them in the jam, we're kind of reimbursing them back and not, not
Yeah, and not
Inversely, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's definitely something that I can, I can look at and see how that shakes out as well.
We have an in-house counsel right here, and I was going to ask him his
You know, when I, I read, of course, they refer to that a couple of times. They seem to be saying that usually gaming commissions have on-staff counsel. And that seemed to be the basis for the recommendation. I think what you need to look at is, have we been getting good service from our attorneys? Not whether other states do it differently, but are we getting good legal counsel? And you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't been here that long, but I think we are. And so, so if we went to the legislature and say, we need more money for a lawyer, I think they would say, where's the AG's office been falling short? And if we don't have a good answer for that, I think the legislature might be kind of slow to give us the money. So I wasn't, I wasn't oversold by their recommendation, because they were just looking at what other people want. So now if the AG was saying to us, we don't have time to represent you and your problem, and you may need to get your own attorney, then I would feel differently about this. Now, are they saying that, Nick?
No, they're not saying that, but I will tell you that I, I could keep Mr. Kaler busy five days a week, eight hours a day, very easily. I really could. I rely on Mr. Kaler more often than he's available. So, and I think that was part of the, in the conversations that we had with Spectrum was, you know, his time is extremely valuable, and he does represent several other commissions, including YDOT, which is probably the biggest board that the state has in all things YDOT, and then gaming is right up there with it, and, and we could definitely So I understand this, because, because I think internally, we, we rely heavily on him, and, and there's a lot of times when he's tied up in something else that, that he's not available, so it kind of slows things down.
Okay. So. Well, we could try it, I mean, but I think traditionally what's happened is they put another attorney on at the AG's office. That's what they do. But we could sure ask.
Well, I think in the end, we need a bigger piece of Mr. Kaler.
I agree. How does he feel about that?
And, and I say that all kidding aside in a very positive way. I worked with Mr. Kaler when I was on the Transportation Commission, have immense amount of respect for the work he does.
Nick, do you think YDOT's bigger than us? Never mind.
Thank you.
I have a pretty, I have an opinion on that.
I'm going to make a quick note here on this one, then. This is another one that, we had already talked about this a little earlier today. One of their recommendations was to increase the minimum age of wagering for paramutual wagering and online sports wagering to twenty-one, to make it consistent with the minimum age for skill-based amusement games. This would require a legislative change. This was one of the bills, and I don't know which one off the top of my head, but this was one of the bills that was presented this year that, that didn't make it through. This topic was resubmitted to TRW to continue that discussion. With this one, and I know that Wyoming Horse Racing spoke to it, their, their business practice is already to keep it at twenty-one and over in their facilities. Most of the other ones are the same, because a lot of these locations do have liquor licenses and bars, and they don't want to try to keep track of that. It's, it's, it's easy to get an eighteen to twenty-year-old in there. Online sports wagering, under state law, you have to be eighteen, but I don't believe any, I think in all of the terms of service for all of our operators that we have approved in this state, they all require you to be twenty-one. So even if you were eighteen or nineteen in the state of Wyoming and tried to, to build a DraftKings account, it's not going to pass their KYC, their know-your-customer, because their internal business plans say you have to be twenty-one, so it's not going to work. But it would be nice to have that, you know, codified in law that that is what it has to be. So like I said, this one has been resubmitted to TRW, and, and I'll keep you posted on how that goes through the interim.
For the folks that came in a little bit late, we're kind of suspending the normal rules here. We're looking at this more as a roundtable. If anytime you have something to say, please don't hesitate to come to a microphone or throw up your hand, and we'll break and come in, and you guys just fire away anytime. Well, I was thinking
I did have a question, you know, when you're back visiting, you bought the, the additional legal. Can you use, what is it, the nine-hundred series as a contract in there? Contract services to supply that to the commission? Because I don't believe there's going to be much appetite at the legislation for another FTE, full-time employee.
I don't believe, I don't believe that we can use nine-hundred, we can use that for contract personnel, like our seasonal personnel. But if, for the recommendation that they're making, it would fall under our, what, a three-hundred or one-hundred series, our, our personnel budget. So that's where that would have to fall.
Yeah. What we're just running into is we have so much going on, and obviously, as y'all know, Mr. Kaler's involved with so many things. We're just lucky to have a little bit bigger piece of this.
I would just think it'd be easier to run through the Attorney General's Office.
Yeah, give them another attorney.
Well, how they want handled, why not even why there?
Um, Nick, we, we can't hear anything.
Uh, Mr. President. Yeah, I turned my microphone on. Mr. President, just, yeah, getting an FTE would be very difficult. I mean, growing, growing government is, you know, not really top on the list with the Wyoming legislative folks. So that's going to be really hard. I, I think even the AG's office would have to have another FTE approved, which would be this, pretty well the same thing as asking for the Gaming Commission to have, say, their own attorney. I think that, you know, that we, we might even get kicked back from, frankly, the governor's office. You got to realize what that means, right? It's a, it's authority through the governor to the executive branch. And I don't know if, you know, that'd be really a question first to ask the governor, frankly, as I would think that makes sure that, you know, our governors are in line with that idea, because every time you shift authority around, especially with legal counsel, it always turns out to be a pretty big deal. That, that'll be problematic. And so just for that conversation, yeah, it's going to be hard, really hard, unless we can somehow backfill it and justify the money, because you charged the said people you need the attorney for a fee. In other words, it was part of the, maybe the percentage of doing business. That, if you could justify it in that manner, maybe a better, well, it'd be a lot easier sell than saying, we just want an FTE, because, well, we need one. It's, it, it's really hard.
Well, with the continued, obviously, revenue, number of games, locations, yada, 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 rules we're dealing with, that's our justification, certainly, increased revenue to the state. We understand.
A fiscal sell. If you could sell it fiscally, where it makes fiscal sense, what you're doing is justified because of X amount of returns because of that position, and it, and it, basically a no-brainer, I think that's a lot easier sell than just coming up saying, well, because we think we need one. Even though I, I understand what your theory is and what you believe, but it has to have more solid, you know, more fiscal basis to it would be better.
And if, Mr. President, and maybe Mike can correct me on that, I believe you've got vacant FTE positions over there at the AG's office now that you can't fill. So I don't, I don't see where they're going to be able to shuffle somebody else in, because we can't fill what we've got.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not in a position to speak to that, because I'm not, not involved in, in those discussions.
Well, I think we've beat that dog as far as we can, let's move on.
The next one that I have was the affirmative licensing criteria. The study on page, forget the page numbers here, how I did this, apparently, I didn't go in order. I went in order of the way my brain was working. It's page triple I towards the very beginning of the book. It says, establish affirmative licensing criteria uniformly for all authorized forms of gaming. Moreover, there should be additional requirements for all three of these forms of authorized gamings in terms of affirmative licensing criteria that are universally found in gaming statutes and regulations worldwide. While there are enumerated disqualification factors set forth in the commission's regulations, there is a conspicuous absence of the standard affirmative licensing criteria. Thus applicants should be required to demonstrate their good character, their honesty and integrity, and their financial stability, integrity, and responsibility. Regulations that codify this significant aspect of gaming regulation should be adopted. Such requirements should go also, or should also extend to gaming vendors who manufacture, repair, and distribute gaming equipment for HHR, skill-based games, and online sports wagering. Any and all persons with the ability to control or influence these gaming operations. We also recommend requiring due diligence, suitability, license background investigations for gaming operators, vendors, and key employees who control or influence operations, extending beyond criminal record verifications. Now, this one, you'll see, it says adopted in part, and that is because of the previous mention of the multi-jurisdictional form. That is what that multi-jurisdictional personal history disclosure form, that is, that is kind of the purpose of that is to, to help them demonstrate their good character, honesty, and integrity. A couple of these, though, it talks about the, the requirements for this requirement should extend to gaming vendors who manufacture, repair, distribute equipment, HHR, and skill-based amusement games, online sports wagering. So when it comes to online skill-based amuse, or I'm sorry, skill-based amusement games and online sports wagering, those are spelled out in statute, who we license, and it is, it's those two people. We license the operator and vendors for skill-based amusement games. I think actually now, for a couple of years, even industry has tried to, to get us to license manufacturers just to make sure that we're vetting manufacturers, so all the manufacturers have a license that we can hold them accountable if something happens. That hasn't passed, so we're, that's who we have on the skill-based amusement game side. And same thing with the sports wagering, statute clearly defines who we license on that one. It says that we license the operators and their vendors, and then it defines what their vendors are. So there's, there's vendors that they use that fall outside of the scope of, of what that statute defines. One of them that we field a lot of calls on is the con, what do they call those folks? They like push content or click? Oh, what was it called? Do you remember what it, what they
Influencers?
Not influencers, close though, it's affiliates, affiliates. Marketing affiliates is one of them. So they, they pay people to put an ad, their ad, on other people's websites, and it's unique. So if somebody's on this website and they click this link that sends them to their page, then they get that vendor or that operator pays that affiliate money for, for the, the lead, basically. And we don't license those people, it's outside of the, the licensing scope that we do under state statute. It appears that a lot of states do license those, because they're always calling, asking what they have to do to get their license in our state. So I just wanted to make that clear on those two, that statute determines who we license and how we license those ones. The HHR one, we do license gaming manufacturers. That one is, we've gone through several of those before. They don't fill out that form, but I mean, we could certainly look at that process and see how other states manufacture or license manufacturers of HHR machines and, and see if we can't
I'd like to see that, you have to get some accountability for that, the whole system out there.
Now, again, that's beyond our purview, that's got to be at the statute level.
So the skill games and sports wagering would require a statutory change if we want to do more than just the operators and the vendors. The HHR side, it is in rule that we license those. The, the process and how we license those, I, I think that's, you know, some of our licensing processes internally, that's, that's a pretty easy thing for us to just figure out how we want to license them, and then what, what information we want to look through and, and verify that these people are, are good. So.
Anyone have any thoughts?
No, moving on.
Okay.
Okay. This one, it's on page twenty-four in the packet. It's corporate ownership, ownership threshold. They recommend that Wyoming reconsider the fifteen percent corporate ownership threshold to trigger licensing for sports wagering operator applicant, applicants, and remove the corporate board of directors control. This says, in this, it, it says that they have, well, they found that Wyoming's fifteen percent corporate ownership threshold for licensing is significantly higher than other gaming jurisdictions. Massachusetts has ten, Jersey has five. It, it appears that Wyoming is probably the highest at the fifteen percent threshold. Wyoming requires an additional element of corporate control to be subject to a licensure that is not present in other regulatory jurisdictions. It says, under a hypothetical ownership situation, a forty-nine percent owner of a corporate sports wagering operator who does not meet the statutory control requirement would not have to submit to licensing process in Wyoming. Again, this would require a legislative change. I understand where, where they're getting this information from. I haven't seen it be an issue currently as, as, with the folks that we've licensed, I guess is the, the best way to put it. I haven't seen anything that, we haven't located or found or discovered any sort of hidden ownerships or anything when we vet these applications and we do these types of licenses. I think part of this, part of the, the thing that, that really helps with this in Wyoming is the, the three jurisdictional requirements. So they have to be licensed in three jurisdictions anyway, and these are, you know, most, in fact, all of our licensed operators, they're, they hold licenses in some of the largest gaming jurisdictions in the nation, so they've gone through multiple background checks, multiple corporate and feasibility studies, just for their, their group. Yeah, so that's, that's how that one weighs out.
So essentially, in, in that regard, someone else has already done the work for us.
A lot of times they have, I mean, they, they really have looked through, you know, in some of these, some of these jurisdictions, for example, I can't remember which one it was, but I will tell you that I, I was reading up on another gaming jurisdictions, you know, the state of Wyoming, this is $100,000 for a five-year license, and then a $50,000 renewal every five years. Other jurisdictions, these licenses cost upwards of $2 to $5 million, and part of that $2 to $5 million application that they pay, they undergo some of the most strenuous corporate backgrounds that I've seen. They, they can take months, 18 months was one of them. There was one that I just read in the great state of Nevada, it was a 22-month background investigation, that it took 22 months for them to go through the corporate structure, and they go very, very, very deep in those. So.
Nick, how do we? I need to talk on the mic?
Yeah.
Nick, I read this last night, and how do we establish corporate control? I mean, when we get an application and, because we, it's the two requirements, 15% plus corporate control, how are we able to establish that objectively?
That's, that's a good question, and right now, it is based on, in their application packet, they submit their application, they list their board of directors, they also supply, you know, director minutes and minutes of meetings, their business plans, so we have to go through those to see if, in fact, you know, A is matching up to B. And, and I think one of the things that's also really gonna help that now is the adoption of that multi-jurisdictional form, because that goes really in-depth on that, and it requires a lot of supporting documentation, so if they're saying that, "I, I'm this person, but I don't have control over this person," they're gonna have to prove that they don't, otherwise, it, it's gonna, the assumption's going to be that they do have control and they're gonna have to go under licensure.
Corporate control can be a real amorphous thing, so, but that's the statute, and we have to live with that. I just wondered if we had any objective way to measure that, and measure something that's pretty subjective, so, anyway, thank you for that.
Yep. I think the federal government's obviously been, been kind of struggling with that also, with the beneficial ownership requirements that have come on, come off, and we've been dealing with the banking industry for years, it's not fun.
Okay. Because the, you know, that example, the 49%, that, that would be quite an interest, and to leave that guy, you know, unlicensed is, is worrisome, you know, so.
And I think this one also goes back to the, the one right before that, this affirmative licensing criteria, to where they have to prove their good character, honesty, and integrity. It really puts the burden of proof on them to, to prove that, A, I don't have control, or B, I do have control. Ready to move on? This one's on page 24, and it says discretionary exemption for a bona fide passive institutional investors. Yep. Sounds just like it says. It says, "Regarding exemptions, exemptions from licensure, while there is a licensing exception for lending institutions holding liens acquired in the ordinary course of business, the Wyoming statute and rules do not contain a discretionary exemption for a bona fide passive institutional investiga, investor that certify that they have acquired their equity interests for passive investment purposes and do not intend to influence business activities, so on and so forth." I would leave this to a, maybe a banker that understands what they're talking about, or a stock trader.
Yeah, I think it stinks. Kyle? Were you getting ready to?
I can, I guess.
Yeah.
I wasn't good.
Oh, come on, we wanna hear.
Come on.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Kyle Ridgway with 307 in Wyoming Downs. My understanding, my interpretation of this when I read it, is that basically, they want to exempt, like, say Vanguard from having to go through licensing. So you're looking at any entities that wanna invest equity in a gaming operation in Wyoming that are considered an institutional investor. I guess you'd have to get into the definitions, I would not want to write that statute to try to define what that means. Is that a venture capital fund? Is that a private equity fund? Is that Vanguard, BlackRock, Blackstone, whoever? But basically exempting groups like that from the licensing criteria that my company would go through, or that I went through, because they're considered a passive investor, so they somehow don't influence operations or governance, I guess. I don't know that I'm gonna take a position one way or the other, but that's my understanding of it, is basically a, a big financial entity that has an equity position would have a different background analysis for licensure, they just wouldn't have to get licensed, basically.
And the premise behind it is that it makes it easier to get these people as investors.
Yeah, theoretically, if you wanted to raise money from Vanguard or a VC fund, it makes it easier to do that, because they don't have to go through the rigorous background check analysis.
I'm not in favor of changing that.
That's something that's typically done, a lot, in a lot of places, a lot of regulatory entities, they don't license any financial institutions, because they've already been backgrounded and checked on by, like, FDIC. It's the same thing with attorneys as well, they've also gotta be certified by the bar, so it's something that you do typically see, I guess.
Just so you know, that and $5 will get you a cup of coffee. Just talking out loud.
So, doesn't sound like we have any appetite to look at changing that for right now?
If we charged them $5, we'd have an attorney.
So, okay, I'll have to look at this some more, because the way that I understand this, it's, they're recommending that we don't license those folks, but the way that our rules and statute are written, we would have to license those folks.
But so far, Nick, you haven't licensed any investors.
I don't, but I don't, yeah, because I don't know if the statute.
Have you been approached by Vanguard?
I guess, Mr. President, I, I don't have all the particulars about Clairvest, one of our financial partners. They could be considered an institutional investor, and they did go through the licensing, so they're a publicly traded Canadian institutional investing company that has a percentage interest in our joint venture, and they went through the licensing process with Nick, I was part of that process.
Pete Legori, Wyoming Horse Racing. Actually, one of our partners is a private equity fund, heavily regulated, more rules than you can think of, and they had to go through the process as well. Just speaking from my own class-three gaming experience, it really comes down to control in many, many jurisdictions that regulate true casino, excuse me, casino gaming. The idea is to put that Chinese wall up there, so that the entity can have influence in terms of making decisions and running the business. That generally is what I've seen in class-three, the criteria. If you're gonna be involved in the business-making decision, you gotta be licensed. If you're just passive investor, you know, that, because of the, the additional layers of review that have to go on in, in institutional environment, SEC regulations, as Kyle said, publicly traded, there's all kinds of rules, more than you want to think about, there's all those safeguards in place, so I think we're living with some of that now. Our investor really didn't have an issue going through the process, because it was fairly straightforward, so it didn't scare them away.
Thanks, Pete. Next subject.
So the next one is on page 24. This is the mandatory licensing timeframe. They're recommending that through statutory amendments, implement an elastic process to where the executive director could authorize the enlargement of mandatory licensing timeframe upon a determination of good cause. Says accordingly, "At a spectrum's recommendation, that the present 90-day window be enlarged through an elastic process whereby the executive director would authorize a reasonable period of additional time upon determination of good cause. We also extend this recommendation to the current skill-based amusement game requirements found in Wyoming Statute 1125-305A and its respective rule, which would be in the, the skill-based amusement game rules, I don't know what chapter that is, but it says Section 2H, which require a licensing decision made within 60 days. Notably, paramutual licensing requirements and investigations don't have any time constraints." This would require a legislative change, if you all remember in, it was '22, maybe, 2022 is when the, the law was changed to put these 90- and 60-day windows for a decision from this office. So far, I don't think we've had any, we've had some close calls, but we haven't exceeded those timeframes. Sometimes that, I will say that the 60-day window can be somewhat problematic occasionally, especially during the live race season, when we're sending DCI hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of print cards to process backgrounds for us, they get extremely backlogged, and then we're sending them skill-based. We have, we've worked really well with DCI, and, and now they get sent in a separate packet, and they're marked, you know, like, priority and urgent, so they, they can try to do that, so we don't end up, you know, missing that 60-day window, but this was their recommendation that, that those time constraints have some, like I said, an elastic process to where, if there's certain grounds that are met, that that can be extended without fear of repercussion to the commission.
What's your opinion?
You know, man, have an opinion? I, I don't, I, I agree with what they're saying, I, I don't know if it should be the, the director as all, you know, the director's decision, I think that should come before you all to make the determination if, if there is reasonable grounds. I think a collaborative group of people making a reasonable determination is far better than one person, because what I may find reasonable, a reasonable reason, you all may not find is a reasonable reason. So I, I can kind of understand it, like I said, I, I would really hope and, and expect that we still would never have to use it. We strive very, very hard in our office to turn these things around as quickly as possible. You know, the, the 60-day time constraint on the skill-based amusement game side, that, that is respective to any application that we receive, which includes what we call the decal applications. So if they want to move a game or install a game, you know, they, we, we, realistically, we have 60 days to review that application and, and issue the decals for that, and I don't think there's been a time within the last 18 months to two years that that's taken more than a day. We, we just don't, we don't sit on that stuff, we want to turn them around as soon as possible, so. I understand it, I see how it could be beneficial if, if a problem arises, but so far, we haven't had a problem.
Well, I'm not inclined to change it if we don't need to.
So if an issue comes up, these guys are gonna look at it and come to us anyway, with the, with the issue for us.
Yes. You guys probably should all turn your microphones.
So basically, as the world stands now with us, if something did come up like that, you would have your investigators or yourself as a team, look at this, bring a recommendation to us, whether to accept or take care of it?
Whether to extend.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good question, because since we haven't run upon this, I, I think the one time that we got really close, actually, we were able to work with the operator, or the vendor, in this case, it was on the online sports wagering side, and, and some of the hiccups were because they have some investors and stuff that are far-reaching, and I think there was some fingerprinting issues, and they don't really do fingerprints where they're from, and so it was, but we had worked with them, and we're like, "Look, we have this 90-day window that we have to do something, we don't have a complete packet, we can't act upon it." Right. And, and if we have to act upon it, since it's incomplete, it's gonna be, really, it's gonna be a, a bad action, and they just said, "No, no, thank you." Like, "We will work through this, and, and that time doesn't matter to us, we'd rather, you know, extend the time." Like I said, that's how it's happened in the past, but realistically, if the time comes and, and something is amiss, I don't think we have any choice, the way that the law reads, it says that we have to issue it or deny it within 60 days, period. So if, if our feet were held to the fire, we would have to, you know, you all would have to make a determination on whether to issue a permit lacking a background check, which is problematic, because this law says that you have to pass the background check, so.
I think we could handle that.
Mr. President, I believe some of this was brought up back when skill games came online, was when we were struggling mostly with this issue, because there was a lot of things coming on all at once, there was a timeframe set forth by the legislation that we had to get the, those things done and out, you know, there was no denying, there were some, you know, some issues did occur back then, but the, the commission did work its way through it, but it would have been nice to have this ability, this tool in the box back then, but I don't foresee that in the future, but it, it was there at one time.
That's correct, and I think this actually came in the 20, and I want to say 2021, I think 2021, so they were legalized in 2020, you know, and then that bill was signed, and then COVID hit, that's like, a couple of days, actually, after that bill was signed, and then we had to wrap our arms around it, we had to license, we had to find out where the games were at, so we, we really struggled with that, and then we had to approve all of these games that were out there with really no clear understanding at that time of what it was, where they were, how they worked, and so there was, you know, there was, several operators were approved, several operators were denied at that time, because the commission really couldn't ascertain that they were, in fact, skill games at that time, and that's kind of what started the, the back and forth in that, and then in 2021, that's when, and that did take a while, because then we had, you know, briefs were being filed in district courts across the state, and, and we were dealing with that, so, so that extended well past 60 days, of course, that took months and months and months, and, and that's how this ended up getting put in there, it was my understanding, so. Like I said, we haven't run across it since it's been put in there, we, we really strive to not come close to that, if at all possible.
It's one of those things that maybe rises to the level of something that would be nice to have, but not on the top list of our priorities we would send to the legislature, and sometime when they don't have anything to do, they might consider it.
And, Mr. President, just a comment about that, it's gonna be really hard to sell any change unless you can prove there was a need to change. There's not a, you know, not to take anything away from the director, but there's some people out there that gave them 200 days, they take 200 days, so this is, being it's not an issue, no one's gonna just let bureaucracy, you know, move on for a, a longer amount of time, so without, without a need, I, yeah, there's, obviously with the abysmal record you had last time during the legislative session of passing nothing, that we tried to get through, you know, we tried to. that we tried to get through, you know, we try to focus on what's, you know, what's, I guess, what we feel we really need. Without a need for a change, like you have to stand up and prove that there's a reason why you'd want to do this. Basically, we have to have anecdotal facts of what happened. And if you don't, forget it. I mean, it just won't work. And I'd just be blunt about it. That's the reality. You're right. We have lots of bills die for lack of time. Some of those ones from here died because of lack of time. And I would also add that any of this, these items in the conclusion, we probably, at this point, probably should look towards the next session to get these forward as bills because you missed the window for the interim topics. You know, if I'm understanding the timing of this right, right? So that ship sailed. So now what are we going to do? We, yeah, two-thirds introduction next session. Well, good luck with that one. And then, so we have next session, right? The next one after. My suggestion would be is, you know, get your priorities together, shove it off to TRW and have them front the bill as a committee bill during the interim for next summer. That may be, I think, at this point in time, maybe the most effective way of moving something forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next subject.
Next one? So this one was sent on page 25. This is the automatic approval of sports wagering licenses. They recommended that we remove the statutory provision that automatically grants a license to a sports wagering vendor if they're currently licensed and operating in three other gaming jurisdictions. They recommend instead having them submit to the standard that the Wyoming Gaming Commission has established as suitability to issue a license. The reasoning behind this, they said that, you know, gaming jurisdictions throughout the United States have different gaming laws, different processes, different suitability requirements. And they, they think that it is more important for Wyoming to look at what's best for Wyoming and the licensing requirements for Wyoming versus relying on what other states' criteria for licensure is.
Do we see any imminent need for this? Is there anything looming out there that's going to make the sky fall?
I personally don't see any, any issues with this one. I actually think that the three licensing requirement that Wyoming adopted was beneficial to us. It's brought the, you know, the biggest and largest contenders in the market that, I mean, these guys know their stuff. They know what they're doing. They hold licenses, multiple licenses. I mean, we've got sportsbook operators that hold physical Class III gaming licenses in Las Vegas, Nevada, and Reno, and Jersey, and all of them. So these guys have a lot on the line. You know, one, one bad mark, even in little old state of Wyoming against a gaming license is detrimental to their business across the entire nation. So I haven't seen anything that has caused any sort of concern. And actually, I think this might have, this requirement might have helped us a couple of times, quite honestly.
Just through this study?
No, just because the three licensing requirement.
Gotcha.
We feel, well, we field a lot of weird phone calls pretty much on a weekly basis. And we've had people call that says, you know, I'm in my basement and I'm, I'm making, you know, Nick's book and I'm going to get a license and I'm going to open my own sportsbook. And that's pretty scary sometimes. So this has, this has come into play to where it's like, yeah, nope, that's not going to work until you, you know, take that product and test it in three other markets and they, you're operating in good standing there. So look somewhere else.
You know, the way I see the benefit in this is just kind of what Nick is saying too, is it weeds out those little guys and encourages already existing businesses to come, which to me gives us some assurance that they're already, you know, that they've already got the financial backing and financial knowledge to run this stuff.
With that, on this one, the only, and this was another bill, and I can switch screens here. This was one of the bills that was presented, that was worked this, this last year. Let me get to it here and I'll tell you. This was the online sports wagering, House Bill 299. There was some amendments to that three jurisdiction requirement outlined in that bill. And the purpose of that was to, because of that three license requirement, the Eastern Tshoshone and Northern Arapaho tribes cannot take part in online sports wagering in the state of Wyoming because they're not licensed in three jurisdictions and they wouldn't be. They would never be. So that bill, that bill was being drafted and pushed to make an exception for those two entities to where if they wanted to enter the online market in this state, they could do it. That bill made it through, that one made it through the House. And then it was voted 1212 as a committee of the whole on the Senate side. There was seven absences and I think that's, so it was a tide and that's, but I'm sure that we'll see that one again. That bill, in my opinion, that bill made sense to allow our tribal neighbors to partake in, you know. And with that, they would be licensed under us if they're doing any sort of gaming activity off of the tribal lands. They would have to come before this commission, go through the same suitability and background checks that, you know, our Big Six have right now. But it does open the door for them to play in that sandbox because of that licensing requirement. But it would exempt them from that, so.
Did that work out for you guys, Jenny?
Would it or did it?
Did it?
No, it did not.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say something on this, this particular issue. I could see where their concern is. It does, it gives Wyoming, it gives them the ability and it gives them the authority to retain our authorities, I guess, to determine who we license. This, the way that this reads, it almost grants a license. It, license is treated as a right as opposed to a privilege. And all regulatory agencies should retain that right to license who they, who they would like based on their own standards without relying on any other jurisdictions. So I could see where Spectrum would, would make that recommendation as well so that we hold our own authority here within the state and within the commission. So I could see that.
And would that involve something maybe as simple as rather than shall to may?
I was just thinking the same thing. I wonder if it, if it was something that said the commission may only issue a permit to, to somebody who has it in three. Then they're not required to do it, but that three, that three jurisdiction requirement is still, you know, it's still a caveat to where if you don't have three licenses, we're not even going to consider it. But if you have three, then we're going to consider it and we're going to do our own.
Well, that might be one of the ones we look at.
I like that thought.
That's a good one. See. This one's on page 26. I'm not going to read this whole thing. This has been a topic of discussion for several years now. This is the CMS system for auditing and regulatory monitoring of skill-based amusement games. I think the, I think the study, I'm trying to find it, trying to where I put it in the picture. Yeah, so it's the last paragraph, actually. So in the rulebook, we actually have that the, you know, the commission may procure a central monitoring system. And then within X number of days after we procure that, the operators or the vendors have to connect to that system. We put, we put one out for RFP a couple of years ago. We got results of that RFP. It would have been fiscally irresponsible to implement it at that time. The price tag on that system was, was extremely expensive. The way that the taxes, taxes are structured with the skill-based amusement games, I think the math came out today, it was five times more expensive than what the office realized from tax income from those. This is an ongoing discussion. We are currently working through some of this and trying to figure out the best way to approach this. I will say though, that as we're looking at this internally, we're not looking at it just for skill-based amusement games. What we would really like to see is a central system that manages all wagering activity within the state. Online sports wagering, skill-based amusement game, HHR, everything across the board to where it's one central data collection center and at points, you know, it gives us all the information that we need, so.
And do you skill, skill-based people out there feel like you're being read into all of these discussions and have the information that you need as we try to find a solution? Are you in the loop?
On these ones, no, they're not. I'll tell you that one. No, they're not. These are, these are discussions that the office has been having with just individual software developers to try to come up with Wyoming's own solution. So.
And so when you come up with something that you think looks workable?
Correct.
Before you come to us, you'll bring it to them too?
So as they continue to work through this process, they will actually be reaching out to a lot of these manufacturers on the skill side so they can have conversations with their technical team to find out what best works for everybody. Because I'm, I'm techie, but I ain't that techie.
At this time, we're going to excuse Commissioner Bowles and thank him for his service. Careful. Do you guys have anything you want to say about that? I mean, obviously, we're a long ways away from coming up with something. It's something that we'll continue to work with you collaboratively on.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Frank Fina with Cowboy Skill. I'm the chief administrative officer for Paseo Matic, who's the manufacturer of Cowboy Skill. We've, as the director has said, we've spoken on this quite a few times. And we embrace a central system. We think it's important. It is pretty standard in the industry. Our concern has always been the same, which is, you know, one size doesn't fit all. A system that monitors games of chance, unless it's very particularized, would not work for games of skill. The markers are different. The, you know this, the metrics are different. So it does complicate getting a single, that would be ideal, by the way, to have a single system to monitor all your gaming types. That would be fantastic. I haven't yet to see that anywhere in the United States, and if you achieve it, that would be great. But it, it does have to have differences so that, you know, skill games don't have to make software changes that in any way convert them into games of chance. Because that would undermine, you know, what we do.
As with anything in the state of Wyoming, oftentimes, we're not available to take that economy of scale into consideration that a lot of other places can. So it makes it oftentimes, you know, a little bit dicey to make something work, but it's where we're headed, hopefully.
It's absolutely, absolutely correct. And I hope that at least as far as Cowboy Skill is concerned, that we have with our central monitoring system, that we've been at all times appropriate and providing the information. And certainly, we would assist, we've got a lot of great software people and people that have written central systems, like our own. So we would gladly assist in that effort.
And that's really what we're trying to do is come up with a system, like I said, the group that we're working with right now, they're developers. That's what these guys, these guys are just software people. And that's kind of what they're looking at is looking at each system's, like Route Boost, and to where how they can integrate that into this system and have their data streams, you know, scrub through this and build reports this way based on the data that you already have. And then looking at the HHR side, how we can connect to this platform, how their data is formatted, how it can scrub that data and refile it and make it make sense. And that's what, really what we're trying to do is.
In the end, give us that next level of accountability and make, of course, the Department of Audit happy and all that kind of stuff, so.
And I think, Mr. President, I think that it, it actually, the way you're describing it, we're in discussions with other jurisdictions to do the same thing. If you're establishing a central data system that just grabs data from different types of reporting systems but is able to verify it, that is affordable. That's very affordable to do it that way. Rather than having these, like the SAS system, Slots Accounting system, where you have like 115 points of contact with a game, that's incredibly complicated and expensive.
Yeah. See, and with that, I think that's, you know, that's one of the things that we're, we're working through is because originally, we were, we were looking at having a controller in every single terminal. We're pushing 7,000 terminals between HHR and skill games. So you have 7,000 controllers and we have 400, roughly 400 locations with a site controller in 400 locations. It's a lot of hardware. Those are all computers and computers tend to fail. So it's 400 pieces of equipment that also have to be maintained in service. So if we can find a better way, like you said, like a central data point that reaches out to everybody's individual own data points, compiles that data, scrubs it, cleans it, you know, flags any errors or inconsistencies that it may see. The one thing with that that, that we would have to look at is the ability to still go back and audit that information. You know, it's going to pull the data, it's going to compile the reports, but we're still going to have to look at how we go back and verify, even if it's our own system, that, you know, something's not amiss, that our system is also working correctly, so. And that's something that we can, as we start working through some of these rule, you know, rule changes and recommendations, that would be one of them is, is how do we get to the point to where, you know, our field auditors can go out there and audit? They really need to be able to go out there in person and do audits right here, right now, so. But we're going to, we'll get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, Nick.
This one, page 27. They recommended enacting a rule that all winnings by a player who's been on the self-exclusion list or that has self-excluded become forfeitable to the state. And then also prohibit the recovery of any gambling losses. It says that they observed that Wyoming statute and rules don't specifically provide for, excuse me, any forfeiture of winnings obtained by a person who is self-excluded from legalized gaming. This one, I put that it would require new rules and/or legislative changes. I'm not even sure about this one, to be honest with you. Like, I don't know. A self-exclusion, and please, if anybody.
So how are they playing if they're already self-excluded?
Well, that's, I mean, being self-excluded doesn't, I mean, it's legal activity. Like, you can self-exclude, all you're doing is making a commitment truthfully to yourself that you're not going to take part and you submit that form to our office saying, I've self-excluded. It's trying to give people some personal accountability for these things, but it's not illegal activity.
It's not worth the paper it's actually written on, yeah.
So we can't force somebody to not accept with the, you know, the sports wagering rules that we're working through the promulgation process. If they're harassing an athlete, we can put them on the exclusion list and you're not going to be able to wager in the state of Wyoming because of your behavior. Self-exclusion for problem gambling is not something that, that we can really, we can't force them to not do. We can definitely encourage them and we give them resources to get help and not do it. But in this case, I don't know, I don't know. So please enlighten us.
Thank you. Tracy Lakecock, General Counsel for Wyoming Downs and 307 Horse Racing. One thing that's important to note is that when someone self-excludes, we work with the state. They send us the list and then we, in fact, actually put them on our own 86 list. So if they come in, we request that they leave to try to work in conjunction with the state on that self-exclusion. Personally, I think that this would deter self-exclusion. I think we want to encourage that as much as possible. It is a part of the recovery piece for people with problem gambling. And if they relapse, I'm not sure doing this would be the best way to get them to, encourage them to self-exclude again. You know, in addition to the administrative burden of figuring out winnings and when they were on the self-exclusion list. But as an operator, and I believe 307 does the same thing, when we see someone, the state gaming commission shares the self-exclusion list with us operators, we then in turn put them on our internal 86 list. And if someone comes in on the self-exclusion and on our list that's then incorporated, we ask them to leave. we ask them to leave.
Kyle Ridgway with 307 and Wyoming Downs. Not to differ from our General Counsel. Historically, at 307, because we've only been operating as one entity collectively for a number of weeks, and so we are synergizing all the season, determining which are best. Quickly, at 307, at the Derby Clubs, we did not trespass people that were on the self-exclusion list. We circulated that list. I actually was personally involved in a couple of them where this is a place where I think some rulemaking collaboratively with the operators is going to be helpful for the industry. So on self-exclusion, it's easy on online sports wagering because it's an on-off button, right? Your app works, your app doesn't work, it's easy for them to do that. For ours, we have physical facilities. The benefits to the physical facilities are property taxes that we pay for the real estate that we own, the sales tax we generate, the jobs that are created, the physical infrastructure that goes with that. The downside is you have somebody who voluntarily placed themselves on, you know, Sarah Beth's self-exclusion list, and then she sends that out, and then what happens if that person comes into our location? So we had a couple that I was involved in where a site manager would call and they would say, "Hey, what should we do with this situation? This is someone that was on the self-exclusion list, they were in our location." So I was involved in a call specifically with Sarah Beth where we said, "Hey, what do we actually want to do about this situation, or what's our obligation as an operator?" Because it's this person electing not to participate in the activity. Technically, it's not illegal for them to be in our facilities. Technically, we shouldn't be trespassing them. At least, that's historically what our perspective was. So what we did is, at the Derby Clubs, what the current policy is, is we worked with Sarah Beth, and we have problem gambling materials that are on-site. And we've trained our folks that if you see somebody that's on the self-exclusion list, to come up to them and basically have a scripted conversation. "Hey, we know you're on the self-exclusion list, we're not, you know, here's some materials and some resources if you choose to deal with those, here's how you can do that." But we didn't feel like it was right to have somebody be on the self-exclusion list, and then we tell them, "You can't be in here because you're on the self-exclusion list." Because it wasn't clear to us on the Derby side whether that would incentivize people to be on the self-exclusion list, or whether trespassing them would accidentally undermine putting somebody on the self-exclusion list, like what Ms. Lakecock was just saying. So as far as this rule, this proposed thing specifically, that they don't get winnings, I don't, I don't know that that creates the right incentive for the player. But I do think there's some, there's some rules that I think would be helpful collaboratively with the operators to determine what our obligation actually is to somebody that's on the self-exclusion list. Because there's pros and cons to just trespassing them and ushering them out of the facility altogether. Because then, then they're just going to turn around and take themselves off the list rather than try to get some help. But it's also tricky to tell your staff who work in these facilities, who aren't mental health professionals, how to counsel somebody that's put themselves on a self-exclusion list. So we created a script where we provide resources and reference that they're on the list and they're allowed to be here, but that we didn't feel like, you know, unless they be, actually became a problem to the facility, that we could trespass them per se.
I just, I think it illustrates a great point, right? Which is that you have two operators trying to accomplish the, the right thing, which is, if someone's on the self-exclusion list, there's a reason. And operators are trying to encourage whatever recovery is necessary, because we all agree that problem gambling is, is bad. It's not what we want. So I agree with Mr. Ridgway. I think it would be helpful to have some direction from the Commission on how to handle those self-exclusions. Because as I sit and listen to what 307 is doing, I see merit in how they're approaching it. But it would be nice to have some guidance.
So that guidance would come from us and all of our intense knowledge of this subject, because we don't have
Right.
... a single person here that knows how to deal with those people either.
I do think we could collaborate. I think that, you know, there is money, and I know we've spoken about this before, for mental health counseling, and I think there are some community resources we could use. I know that Sarah Beth has got some great contacts.
I have a great contact.
And you have a great contact, you do. That could help us, right, with that piece? Because I do think it would be instrumental in working with the mental health community to understand what incentivizes that recovery piece.
See, I, oh, excuse me. I'd have to disagree that it would, if you read what they said, nobody would put themselves on the exclusion list if they're winning all the time. But it also says you can't recover any losses from them. So if you, the only reason you put your name on it, you must be losing, and it says prohibit any regaining of gambling losses. So I mean, that's kind of a two-edged sword. So they covered their bases. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Pete Legoria from Wyoming. And I don't want to reiterate what, what both my colleagues have talked about, but, but, you know, we, like 307, have literature. We try to intercede when we can identify the individuals. But we also, we also flag them in our marketing systems as well, meaning that, you know, a lot of what we do is reaching out to customers with either email or direct mail in the mail system. And this person has said, "I'm, I need help." So in addition to that, and they may do that as well, I'm not saying they don't, but we actually turn off that customer from receiving any emails or any, any other incentives to come back. So as trying to help them stay away, if you will, in the process. But I think some guidance would, would be helpful. And honestly, in my career, I've seen it both ways, where the, the, you're dealing with self-excluded list as well as a actual state list. So there's two lists. But I've also seen where winnings are confiscated and where they're not. So it's, it's not a clear, it's not a clear answer, because we're all, we're all not mental health professionals. We're trying to help people in the best way we can, so.
Maybe we could enlist the help of some mental health professionals and accumulate the information we have and come up with a plan that we would all kind of agree to try on, see how it works. So it shall be.
Mr. President, I can also tell you, on, on that note, Ms. Sarah Beth is actually going to be going to the National Problem Gaming Counseling Meeting thing in Nashville here pretty soon. So hopefully, she can bring back some great ideas and we can try to develop a, a good plan, something moving forward.
Good. Subject near and dear to my heart. My daughter has a doctorate in counselor, supervision and education. This is a subject high on her priority list. All right, next subject.
This one, it's on page 29. I'm not going to go through this one too much. It talks about designate a Wyoming Gaming Commission Law Enforcement Officer as an intelligence liaison with a focus on developing intelligence regarding legalized gaming. So currently, right now, Special Agent Steinberg and myself are both members of certain intel groups, whether it be within the state or in the region. So we do take part in intelligence briefings and things like that. So this is, this is kind of already done, but we could also just work on some internal role responsibilities for one of our other agents and push that on. So this one is, is kind of done. I did, I did note in, in my, my own stuff that it talks about, there's some, some really good trainings offered through UNLV and the International Gaming Institute. Special Agent Steinberg and I've got a nice big list of training opportunities, and we're, we're really trying to, to get some training opportunities out to people. Our auditor actually just came back from an auditor's training that was held in Las Vegas this last week. He came back with some really good stuff, too, on the auditing side of totes and everything else, so.
I think if you're comfortable with what and how things are going with you guys, I don't think we need to designate specifically anybody there to be an intelligence liaison. I mean, you've got it all done right now with DCI, mostly the police departments.
This one, it's a conservatorship. This is also on page 25 in the packet. They're recommending that Wyoming law, this, this may require a legislative change, but they're recommending that the Commission consider implementing provisions for an orderly transitional control, allowing for the continuation of legalized gaming operations until a new gaming operator can be properly licensed. I'm not going to read this whole one either. I've, I've reached out to several other jurisdictions to try to figure out how that looks in other jurisdictions. Basically, the purpose of this is if, you know, the Commission acts upon Operator A's license, and Operator A is found in gross violation of their license, and we pull their license, Operators A, Operator A's entire operation doesn't just shut down and, you know, 20 locations close and 200 people are out of a job and everything else. It basically, the Commission would assign a conservator to oversee those operations and that license while it sorts through either disciplinary action, the reassignment of that license to a new qualified entity to take over that license. So I'm trying to get more information on how this.
That is so far out of our lane.
Yeah.
We don't have enough staff
No.
... to handle one instance of this and do nothing else.
No.
Mr. President, I think AG could probably handle that.
Yeah.
He's got, he's got a lot of time.
I think we spent enough time on that one already.
This is another one. This is on page 30 and 31. It says, they, they consider amending the rules or writing a rule requiring the simultaneous, simultaneous filing with the Commission when a licensee voluntarily files a Wyoming-derived currency transaction report or suspicious activity report with Finson. This is, this is part of the online sports wagering rules already. We have something similar on the HHR side. It doesn't, it's not written in rule, and it's actually not even in rule. It's been, you know, it's been a request of the operators that they file these reports with us. We call them jackpot. I forgot, and I even made, I made the form. I forgot something. Jackpot wagering report or something. So anytime a jackpot, a reportable jackpot is hit at an OTB, they file a report within our, with our office. That report automatically comes to me every time I get them. I got four of them since we've been sitting here.
Same criteria as a CTR.
It basically is. It's actually a little bit less, because some of it, on a, on some of these that we receive reports on, the W2G is 300 times the wager amount. So you can have a reportable, you could have a reportable winning that's far less than what a Finson would ever trigger.
And you have access to Finson?
We do not, but we, we have friends about
Who do?
... six steps away from us that do. The other one, this is on page 31, it talks about regulatory risk assessments. This is partly covered. We could expand the scope of, of these assessments. Currently, these are done when we do our, you know, every year, we, we select a certain number of OTB locations where we do what we call site security assessments. And we'll have our, our folks in those that do, you know, it's, it's usually our law enforcement folks, and they're looking at safety and security issues. They're looking at, you know, tactical issues that we can share with local PDs and SOs when it comes to that. This is part of that, the risk assessments that we do internally. This specifically was, you know, developed for the HHR operations. It never led over to the skill game side of it. But I think that's something that we can internally work on as well. I know that we have some rules that talk about, you know, certain auditing requirements. And now that our auditor's got some, some really good training this last week, he's going to be starting to do some of these audits to see, you know, what stands out and, and recommend if there's anything that we need to do on this one. So this one might be something that we can just come back to later on as well.
Okay.
Page 29 and 30, the study recommended that the state enact laws for money laundering. Senate File 116, made it through the Senate. It was introduced, but it didn't clear both chambers. It made it through the Senate, okay. I think this was one that they might have just ran out of time. Also be, or was put on the list as far as interim discussion topics as well. On page, boy, now we're going way back. Page AAA or triple I, at the very beginning of the book, they recommend that we adopt in whole or part as applicable the model regulations of A R C I for HHR. They say that HHR should be treated in the same fashion as any traditional casino-style slot machine. Thus, there should be strict operational controls imposed regarding the counting and movement of money, so on and so forth. These have been, I know that, that this Commission has looked at HHR rules multiple times, and I think they were, they ultimately were tabled a little while back, because we were looking at, you know, there was a lot going on prior to this legislative session. There was some discussion about ultimately how those rules would come out. But I think now would, would probably be a good time to revisit these Chapter 10 rules or chapter, I guess this would probably be a whole new chapter, to be quite honest with you. It would make a lot of sense to, to remove. Right now, we have a couple of pages of HHR rules inside the simulcasting rules, but it would really make sense to separate those two out, because simulcasting and HHR really are two different animals. And the HHR rules, they're important. I mean, we're 2.6, $2.7 billion is being wagered, so it would probably be a good time to, to dust those off and, and look at them again.
Okay. Let's make that a priority for us, but that's all.
Coming year.
This is all rules, yep.
This would be all rules.
Yep, this would all be rules.
Within, within our purview.
Within our purview, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's all I have, actually. This is just the 16 specific considerations. The, a couple of their other, their other thoughts in here was the, the room for expansion. I think it's back in, of course, I didn't read page number on that one. Towards the end of it somewhere.
33.
33 and 30?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, here we go. So yeah, that, that was the first 16 recommendations. Here we go. Yep, and then this one, starting on page, yeah, 33. This is where they really got into the market potential for HHR, talking about the gross gaming revenue, the percentage of HH, or the percentage of AGI that is essentially spendable for HHR. You'll see at the bottom of this slide, and it is on page, yeah, 30. This one's actually on page 34. It shows that the, they estimate that the statewide, or they, they're saying that the statewide percentage of AGI for HHR is .52%. In the counties where HHR is legal, it's .96%. And they're saying that the statewide potential is .65, and the statewide actual is .52. So, so based on their mathematical wizardry, they say that there's about a, I don't know, what is that, a .13% possible growth in the HHR. However, if you look on page 37, it actually says that capturing that is probably not possible. And that is because we have seven counties where paramutual wagering is not legal. So you're not going to be able to capture any sort of increased revenue from the seven counties that are not legal. And actually, if you look on, ouch, on page 44, where it shows the percentage of the AGI, you know, there's certain, there's some counties that are, you know, 1.28, 1.67, 1.24. And a lot of that is because, you know, there, there's surrounding counties that HHR and paramutual wagering is not legal, specifically like Nitrona County is 1.24. You know, Nitrona County ho- County hosts the state wrestling, state basketball. So we get a lot of traffic from other counties that don't have that ability. So when they're here, there's an influx in that play as well that, that contributes to that. So with this one, I, you know, the one thing that I, that just stands out to me is, I think it's important as we, you know, continue to move forward that we start looking at, especially on page 44, the, the market potential is what they're saying. I think on page. Skip through these here real quick. There it is right there on page, this must be on page 37. It's on page 45. Boy, I was way off. Page 45 in the second paragraph, you know, based on, on their market analysis, and they've got a lot of different like catchment areas in here. They're looking at populations. They're looking at, at, you know, AGI and all of that other stuff. But on page 45, the, the second paragraph says that the matrix seemed to indicate that currently Wyoming has sufficient number of HHR machines approved to meet the demand. Going forward, as HHR locations near the borders of Nebraska, Colorado, and Utah expand, machines could be shifted by operators to more advantageous locations or the commission could approve more machines. I think that's, you know, personally, I think that's pretty important. If we look at the, the figure number 17 on page 44 and we start, you know, really weighing out these numbers and, you know, in, in these requests for growth and locations and everything else to, you know, tie these two together to make sure that these requests are actually feasible. Every, every location that we add also adds a cost of regulation. We got guys on the road all the time checking these locations out. So we want to ensure that, you know, not only is it the, the right call for the municipality and the, the location for that, that town, but also that it's not costing the state money. Because it shouldn't be costing the state extra money to regulate things that aren't. There's no realized gain for the state either.
Yeah. If we're not going to, if we're not going to grow the industry, we can't continue to incur additional costs in regulating it.
So, any questions on this one?
First President, Director, just noticing Sweetwater County is astonishing high, high here on the HHR percent of AGI at 1.67%. And I just wondered, which just seems kind of odd. I get the, the border counties, UNTA, let's say, but I just wondered why it's, why you might think it's that high. I know the numbers are what they are, but just.
You guys over there are crazy.
Well, we, I guess we're big gamblers there in Sweetwater, but I just, just, just the question about why it is so high. It's the highest for the state. So, thank you.
That's a good question and I can follow up with them. That is what the numbers showed. And I think there was some, actually, Mr. Ridgeway, I know he had worked with some, on some Sweetwater County projects. So he, he's got some really good information about some of that.
Commissioner Schiffer here. What are we going to do when, you know, we have a new operator who's now licensed to have machines and we have firms that are, I don't know whether they're expanding or not, but I mean, we're going to be faced with applications that go in the face of these statistics. And how are, how are we going to deal with that issue going forward?
I got a part of it. I think he's talking about, basically, we have a, a new person that's come into the horse racing industry and as, as they entered the HHR industry, where we're talking about something that we feel is already saturated. How do they expand without, are they actually expanding or are they stealing for someone else? Or I mean, whatever. Is that kind of where you were headed with that? Because we can't hear you very well, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I have some problems with my, here we go. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying is, you know, what we're looking at is basically the state where gambling is legal is saturated. The only opportunities are to pull in out of state people to gamble. And we're going to be faced with new applications from a new, this fourth operator. I don't know the status of the present three operators, whether they're planning on expansions or not, but my question is how is the gaming commission going to deal with these applications as they come before us? Because really, that's the crux of the matter here. We've got all the machines we can handle and we know there's more applications coming down the road. Makes sense?
Makes excellent sense. And I think that's something we're going to have to look at the data that we looked at today with regards to 28 machines and, and be as serious about that as we are large applicants looking for 400 or 800 or 1,000. And really, at what point have we reached saturation? And are we then diluting ourselves? Because it takes, it takes more of our 13 employees time to try to regulate that without any increase in income. So it's going to be quite a conundrum to navigate. And we're going to have to give it some real hard thought.
Yeah. And, and I think along those lines too, that, you know, some of this data, now that we have access to and we can see in point two, you know, that will be included in, in all, in all requests moving forward. Special Agent Steinberg and I were talking earlier this week about, and I'm going to reach out, figure out a way to maybe do some annual updates to this report as far as numbers go to where we can keep a running idea of, you know, where, where the market is at every year, you know, and not wait another 10 years to do something like this that, that we can weigh heavily on this and, and use this information and data to, to make good informed decisions.
Kyle, did you have something?
Mr. President, through you, I was going to talk a little bit about Senator Colb's question specifically about Sweetwater County. It's one of the things that's kind of tricky about a study like this, and I'm going to speak gener- generally, is that Wyoming is unique in that it has a significant transient population. And that is your oilfield workers or people that are building a Trona mine or people that are building pipelines, your, your fly-in, fly-outs. So Sweet, Sweetwater County does have a high proportion of individuals that are coming in for six-week, eight-week stints. That's one of some of the counties. It's difficult to measure that, how much that goes up or down. But like, you know, our location in Converse County, like we, we have data about, you know, the player base there isn't from Douglas, all of it, right? There's a lot of oilfield workers. The same thing in Gillette, you know, and Sheridan tourist season fluctuates up and down. So, you know, there, there are some factors that contribute to why play may be elevated and why you may still see growth in a market, even though the population on a census basis doesn't exist. What I would say generally is, you know, the, the practice historically that we had at 307 was for a location that we presented, we had a third-party independent study or an analysis that we presented as part of our application to show that there would be organic growth. So for every location that 307 had, we demonstrated from a third-party that there was organic growth that we could project based on the product type that we had, the location that we had geographically, why it was located where it was. So, you know, for somebody who's been coming here for four or five years, like, I think all the operators are going to understand a, a level of scrutiny, but it's incumbent on us to demonstrate that there's still growth with the things that we do want to bring to the table. I mean, many of you would recall, like, I kind of cross-examined Spectrum in the November meeting, but this is exactly what they said then. And this was the concern that many of the operators were raising about decision-making around additional licensee at the time, is exactly what Commissioner Schiffer brought up. Is it, is it fair to an additional licensee to license them in the face of a study that says, you know, a lot of these local markets are saturated and it's incumbent on the business plans that we present to you to show that there's organic growth and there's going to be tax revenue growth attributed to whatever the activities are that we engage in going forward.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. David.
Mr. Chairman, it kind of boils back down to the same history of Wyoming of boom and bust. Give me one more boom before I bust, you know? But I mean, you know, with the agenda of the, the present administration, you know, with drill, baby, drill, what's that going to do to Wyoming as far as the influx of these people? It's going to go, when they go boom like that, what does that do to the industry here? Same thing. They will blossom also before it settles back down. So it's a, it's hard to determine there.
Certainly some of it will be driven by the market itself, but at, at some point, I think it's, would be irresponsible for us to not put some sideboards on some of this.
I'm sorry, I wanted to jump in. I just wanted to just throw a little reminder out there that the tribes were not consulted with this in this study at all. Some of the numbers and some of the information that was put out there in regards to the tribes, tribes and their gaming were inaccurate. So I think we need to take that in mind as well as to the impact and saturation that any growth or potential growth of skill-based HHR or any other gaming will have on not just the tribes, but the other citizens of the state of Wyoming.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildcat. Anything else on this study, Nick?
The last, let's see here. I think I got, wrong button. This one talked about the readiness to support new gaming establishments or expansion of live horse racing. This is on page 78. You know, this kind of went over, and, and we had talked about this, I believe, in our November meeting about the availability and supply of horses, the demand for the product, the variable impacts to potential supply purses, full crops, the amount of competition, race dates, number of tracks, weather, practical live racing. You know, this, this, as this kind of stands now, we have four operators. We've got approved race dates from May through the end of October. So we got six months of racing.
Could be wild.
Could be wild. Could be fun. Hope the weather stays like this next year. That would, or this coming year would be great. But, you know, these are things that, that we kind of have internally on our list to, to really start trying to get some, some metrics to, you know, judge these full crops and the movement of horses and, you know, because we certainly want full, you know, we want full race days and we want full fields. And we don't want to have to, you know, run six or seven head on a card and run six, seven cards a day. We want full fields. That was kind of the point of it. We don't want to have to just kind of reduce our days or the cards per day to, to fill the gap. I don't think that was what the intent was. We got some ideas to start tracking this stuff as we continue to move forward and.
It's going to be interesting.
Be something that we revisit every year.
Yep.
And I think part of this is going to be, you know, become part of our annual, you know, I know we, we do three-year permits a lot for our live and even our simulcasting permits, but every, every year during our annual meeting, this is probably going to be one of the things that we need to probably sit down and look at is, you know, the, the 2025 season will be done this year. We can look at the numbers and see, you know, how the races, how the cards fill. Did they fill full? Were they, were they running short? You know, get, get input from the operators. Were they having trouble, trouble finding horses? So on and so forth. And then really let some of that, the actual, I guess, what's happening kind of lead the way. You know?
I just, it didn't like to add that there's been a continued, the two crickets in, in race tracks running. I can't remember who it was earlier talked about, but Northern California started going.
Commissioner, we can't understand you.
Okay. Well, I'm pretty understandable.
Now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. I'm using an alternate microphone here. But anyway, the, the race tracks are diminishing. The Northern California is pretty much a gone circuit. There's other places that are, are closing their race tracks. So I don't believe the Wyoming bred horses are going to carry our cards, but I think they're going to continue to see, especially if our operators will really perch those purses, you're going to see outside horses wanting to come here and run. So there is reason for optimism that the, the races will continue to, to grow and flourish. And, you know, it's up, really up to the operators to reach out and try and recruit those horses to their, their tracks. And, and that's not really our function, but something that they really need to work on and, and try to develop.
Thank you, Commissioner Schiffer. Is there anything anybody else would like to talk to, talk to the commission about or have any comments about the study with relation to any part or portion thereof?
Hello, Mr. President. And my name's Leslie George. I'm with Wyoming Amusement and Cowboy Skill. I think my biggest takeaway from the Spectrum study, I very much appreciate the end of the discussion you've just had, that you'll probably be looking at rules for some sideboards. I think skill games came forward really responsibly with the parameters that we got through to keep us contained and keep the landscape of Wyoming in the places that we operate, looking like Wyoming. I think my big takeaway from the Spectrum study, knowing the lift that the legislature appropriated for it, is that we've talked a bit about the self-exclusion with problem gaming and there's the whole awareness month. This study didn't have any consideration on economic, economic impact socially in our communities. I think of things like foreclosures and, and general poverty and the programs. There's nothing here that's giving us a gauge for you to make decisions outside of if it's profitable. And I don't know if Spectrum might be willing to take on more, but I feel like that part was overlooked. There was a Johnson County anomaly on the skill reports and it was just some data error, I believe, but it did also prompt Spectrum to kind of do a deeper dive on how we talk about the comparisons between our reports. So I think there had been about a five years since skill games have existed misconception because of our reporting being based off of cash in and cash out. That, to me, is tangible and, and the proper metric. What you see then is a profit margin and the reciprocal of the profit margin, that's not comparable to HHR, right? So, for example, HHR's hold, there's a five-page Spectrum additional piece that, that shows that HHR's hold is something in the low 90s, which means, excuse me, their profit, their, their percent payback to player is in the low 90s, which means their hold is around, you know, that 8%. That's true for skill games as well. We just report cash in and cash out. So what you see when you look at the 75% return to player on us, 25% is not our hold. It's simply our profit margin. Our holds are about the same. So I know we're, we're, our figures are not, are we, you know, we are not, we're dwarfed by the, the size of the figures and the numbers. It's hard to comprehend when you speak in the billions in the state of Wyoming with only 600,000 population. So I just think if, if anybody would like to take a little deeper dive on, on really what that economic. what that economic impact looks like in our small state, I mean, the billions of dollars, how many dollars per person are going into these machines? And in, and there's gaming figures in there that make it more staggering. The, the churn is replay. It's taking a dollar that was just recently wagered, that was temporarily re-awarded back to that player, and that player opts to replay that awarded amount before they cash out and actualize the result. So the churn rate is, is very important here because there's real money inserted into machines. And then there is that same dollar replayed during a gaming session over and over and over that makes a billion number. But if you go down to that core cash in, that's a little more tangible for understanding in, in Wyoming. I think skill games get that metric correct. That's all I have as a comment.
Thank you.
Good information.
Anyone else? On any subject?
Well, Mr. President, so with that, you know, and Leslie and I have talked about this before, it is, it's weird how they're reported. You know, skill games are, are net proceeds, 20% of net proceeds. The way that HHR is taxed, it's based on total handle. They, they pay total handle, so the reports, yeah, they definitely look different. And we've struggled with that for a long time, you know, we start saying $2.7 billion in, in handle, and that's the first thing people think is, $2.7 billion in cash around here? They're not putting that in, and we have to explain that all the time over and over again, so. You know, I've been looking at other ways to try to make that more comparable. I will say that every, so far, what I've found is that every jurisdiction with legalized HHR, they all report the same. All of the reports talk total handle because it's all taxed based on total handle. That way, the two, the two match up. So we're still looking at, at ways to maybe try to make that more understandable, I guess would be the, the right word.
Well, if no one else has anything more with regards to this study, I think we've kind of reached the end of our commission meeting today. I'd like to thank all of you that stayed for your interest and willing to collaborate with us and try to find a better way to, to, I guess, navigate this new deal that we're dealing with here in the state of Wyoming over the past 10, 12 years, and, and we'll continue to move forward and do the best we can as a commission. Thank the legislature for their guidance, and hopefully we'll get a few subtle changes here and there to make it a little bit easier on us and better for the state of Wyoming, and with all y'all's help, we'll do a good job. That being said, I guess, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.
Thank you.